Call to order, the regular board meeting of the governing board of trustees of the Romaland School District is called to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call, Mr. Reller.
Here.
And Mr. Sperry.
Here.
Mrs. Clyte.
Here.
And Mr. Gary.
Here.
And myself, Ms. Moon here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I'm going to review the governance norms. We agree to act with dignity, respect differences, build trust, work as a team, engage the public, focus on the success of every student, and work together for the common good. Communications, the governing board and superintendent, Mr. Reller. Anything to report?
Nothing at this time.
And Mr. Sperry.
Nothing at this time.
And Mrs. Clyte.
Nothing at this time.
And Mr. Gary.
Nothing to report.
And myself have nothing to report. Superintendent's report, Trevor.
No report this evening, Ms. Moon.
Thank you. And public comments, Nikki, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do.
So I want to read a short little thing. Members of the audience are invited to address the board at this time on each agenda or non-agenda item. The Ralph M. Brown Act, and in accordance with the Board Policy 9323, limits the governing board and staff's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters. At this time, such comments are made. If appropriate, the board may direct the superintendent to follow up on topics brought up in the public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and 20 minutes per topic. All requests addressed the Board of Trustees must be submitted via the request to address the Board of Trustees Google form and must be submitted no later than 4:30 on the day of the board meeting. The regular board meeting open session is scheduled to begin at 5:30. Nikki, I'll let you read the public comment.
Okay. The public comment that we have this evening was submitted by Luann Galizio, a Boulder Ridge elementary teacher. And she, the following is her comment. "Thank you for your attention. My name is Luann Galizio, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Boulder Ridge Elementary School. I speak for myself and for many of my colleagues. I love my students and plan to do the best I can for their education in the coming school year. Training slash preparation. I am concerned that the following statement was included in the COVID-19 Operations Report, written report for Romaland School District. Additionally, over the past few years, teaching staff received professional learning for blended learning, teaching methods, digital tools, Google Classroom, and multiple online learning programs. Although factually it is true that general opportunities were presented, no systematic training was provided on integration of these multiple online learning programs other than iReady. Indeed, I found myself learning even the basics of Google Classroom via YouTube videos. I learned Screencastify likewise in order to deliver lessons. There has been essentially no formal training on the virtual aspects of the adopted curriculum. Despite numerous requests over the past school year, far before the shutdown, I have been unable to obtain training on the McGraw-Hill Language Arts Curriculum. I consulted with our educational coach, and she helped the best she could. However, she hasn't received the training either. I beseech the board, please make professional learning slash training opportunities available in all of the adopted curriculums and have the school calendars downloaded into them so the lessons are easily accessible by date. The most difficult part of distance teaching was the lack of proper tools. Time is running out. It will be the beginning of August before you know it. I want to be able to hit the ground running, no matter which instructional method, I'm sorry, instructional model I am teaching. I would expect that there would be a standard model for instruction that the individual instructors could build upon and modify their specific needs and smoothly transition from brick to click. Physical safety. Additionally, I would like to hear the specific plan for physical safety upon the school's physical reopening. I cannot make a decision on which teaching model works best for me until I hear specific comments, commitments to the following. Mainly, I would like to know if the district's plans plans on following any, all of the CDC and/or CDE recommendations and guidelines. It has come to my attention that outlined districts plan on making their own protocol, dismissing these recommendations, distinguishing them as recommendations not mandates, choosing to ignore many of them. Does the district intend to follow the direction of outlined districts with lax plans? Social distancing. Desk placement. Let's keep in mind that the six feet is minimal. As teachers, we will be unable to keep distancing ourselves from the students if we need to walk between these desks. Students per classroom, if the students per classroom are reduced, where will the other students go? If classroom numbers have to be reduced by 50%, I know that there isn't 50% of the population choosing distance learning to make up for it. Masks and shields required for whom? How will they be maintained? Will there be an assumption that the parents will maintain their cleanliness? How will schools govern the entry and exiting of buildings and the movement throughout school buildings? Cleaning protocols. Bathroom cleaning and supervision. Wash hands when arriving and leaving home, arriving at and leaving school, after playing outside, after having close contact with others, after using shared services or tools, before and after using restroom, after blowing nose, coughing and sneezing, and before and after eating and preparing foods, per California Department of Education, stronger together. That is a lot of hand washing. What has the district planned to meet this? Our kindergarten bathroom, note singular, is in high-traffic area and has no supervision at any time of the day. It would have to be staffed the entire time students are present on campus. I am pretty sure that this goes for the other bathrooms as well. Scheduling of support staff. Recession scheduling, supervision and cleaning. Currently, two to three classes go to recess at the same time in the same location. This can no longer happen and will increase supervision needs. Cafeteria lunch scheduling, supervision and cleaning. If eating in the classroom is proposed, who will supervise the students? Arrival and dismissal procedures. Provide supervised sufficient points of access to avoid larger gatherings, per CDE, stronger together. Plans for illness. Quarantines and shutdowns. What circumstances will cause an immediate shutdown? Coordination through the district and with public health officials should be decided in advance. When shut down, what teaching structures will automatically be in place? If and when an outbreak occurs, what protections will the staff have in place? What plans are in place for staff that may get sick from exposure at school? What substitutes? Will substitutes be available? And if so, will they be sufficiently trained? As recommended by the state superintendent, has a plan been implemented to cover sick days due to COVID-19? Will these days be covered under workman's compensation? As the fall brings illnesses such as the flu, respiratory infections, and whooping cough, will modifications be required to medical exclusion policies? If there are illnesses outside of COVID-19, will substitutes be available for instructors in-house and virtually? Virtual instruction is exhausting. I will not be able or expected to continue while sick. While substitutes need to be site-based so as to not spread throughout the district. If substitutes are not available, what will happen then? Classes will not be able to split up as in the past. Local public health clearance. Local public health officials have made determinations, including but not limited to the following. Testing availability. Consult with local public health officials to ensure adequate tests and tracking, tracing, resources are available for schools to reopen. Employees have access to COVID-19 testing at regular and ongoing intervals. Is this in place? Can we be tested regularly and where? Designate a staff liaison or liaisons to be responsible for responding to COVID-19 concerns. Employees should know who they are and how to contact them. Is this in place? Distance learning staff. A percentage of our staff are going to be working offsite. How will their needs be met? Will an upgrade of internet be provided? Will internet fees be reimbursed? Will additional equipment such as green screens, headphones, microphones, cameras, doc cameras, et cetera, be provided or reimbursed for? Will USPS mail be provided or pickup available for parents to receive and return physical learning materials? Will there be a district contact person specifically for distant staff? Summation. I am anxious, as I am sure many of our staff are, about the unknowns. If you tell us there are to be three learning modules, we will need much greater details in order to choose which is right for us. If we or our direct family have physical reasons that we need to limit our teaching to blended or distant, are we to be given priority over other staff that have a previous but not necessarily a need? And that completes her submission.
Thank you, Nikki. And Mr. Peyton, I know that this is, you're in the middle of addressing each of these questions. And once you have finalized that, could you report back to the board?
Ms. Moon, I'm happy to do that. Our safety committee has addressed many of these topics already. One of the challenges we face is between now and the start of school should health guidelines change. We're approximately five or six weeks away from starting a school, and we haven't gone a five or a six-week period without some sort of adjustment and help guidelines as they come. So, but absolutely, I would be happy to update the board on those processes.
And I do want to share, Mr. Peyton, that we do appreciate the time that you have been and that it's not only our district. Every, every school, college is going through the same thing, and they're doing it right now. So, and I think they're just trying to keep up with all the daily changes. But we do appreciate the comment, and we look forward to the plan when it's, when you've completed it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to employee association reports. Mr. Murray, do we have any association reports this evening?
We do. We have a report from RTA. Are you ready for it?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Good evening, board members, Mr. Peyton and Cabinet. I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of you for including RTA in the planning process from the beginning of the outbreak and all the way through to what next year might look like. It was very informative. Being involved made it much easier to answer questions from my members, and it helped to put them at ease at this uncertain time. The team is looking forward to collaborating in the months ahead so we can all do what is in the best interest for students, parents, and all the staff of RSD. Mary Wegman, RTA President.
Thank you. Any from California School Employees Association?
We do not.
Okay. We're going to move on to the notice of public hearing. G1, intention to levy special taxes within community facilities, District Number 2020-1 Watson/Branson of the Romaland School District, and to issue bonded indebtedness. This is a time and place set for public hearing regarding the proposed formation of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Watson/Branson of the Romaland School District. I declare this public hearing open. The board has received and reviewed a special tax report regarding the proposed formation of CFD 2020-1 prepared by Koppel and Gruber Public Finance, which is hereby entered into the record of this public hearing. At this time, the Board of Trustees will receive comments regarding the proposal or proposed formation of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Watson. Were there any members of the public who submitted comments regarding this matter?
No, there were not.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. The public hearing regarding the proposed formation of Communities, Community Facilities District Number 2020-2 Countryview of the Romaland School District is hereby opened and continued to August 11, 2020. Information items. School reopening instructional models. Ms. Wise to introduce this item.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, members of Cabinet. The presentation will be up soon. We'll give a few seconds for that. Okay. So, at our last meeting, two weeks ago, we looked at survey data of staff and parents' guardians in our school community to consider multiple options for how we can reopen schools for 202021. We've had, as Ms. Wegman's comment suggested, committee work, many meetings, consideration of state and county guidance. We have, when we shared that information with the board last time, you said to consider, you know, possibilities of what the models could look like. So this is information for you tonight on different models. So as you'll recollect, some of the survey data that we looked at last time showed when asked about a traditional model or distance learning option, the majority chose traditional, but there was a large chunk interested in a distance learning option. When offered three models of possibility, the majority was still traditional, but then hybrid became the second most popular option, which is a blend of on-campus and virtual learning or distance learning. And then distance learning was still an interest for members of our school community. And so we landed upon that families and staff want choice and options. That was evident, and we're hearing that also across the region with districts in Riverside County. And so this was an opportunity to develop and expand our program options for students, families, and staff. Continue our enrollment growth and thus our fiscal solvency, and an opportunity for robust planning with our union partners. And so there are three model options ongoing for consideration. Traditional model, the five days a week in-person, on-campus instruction. Hybrid, two days a week in-person and on-campus instruction. Then two days a week of asynchronous, which I'll be defining soon, virtual learning, and one day a week of synchronous virtual learning for students. Or what we're calling a virtual model, to move away from the term distance, since that has connotations of the last three months. And virtual model, with five days a week of synchronous and asynchronous virtual or online teaching and learning. So, we all have a sense of what traditional is, so I won't be defining that beyond the last slide this evening. But I want to define the terms synchronous and asynchronous in terms of virtual learning environments. Synchronous is basically at the same time. Teacher and students learning, working together at the same time, and the communication's happening in real time, possibly through video conferencing, live chats, or livestreamed videos. Whereas asynchronous is learning at different times. The communication is not live. The teacher might post videos in a Google Classroom of lessons, but students are working on their own independent work or even collaborative work in their Google Classroom, but not at the same time as interacting with the teacher. And you'll see these terms synchronous and asynchronous throughout this presentation with a capital S or a capital A in some of the information I'll show you. So first, we'll consider a virtual model, previously known as distance learning. But in a virtual model, this is five days a week of virtual instruction and assignments for students at their home. Google Classroom is already our standard for our learning management system. In the virtual model, students could have personalized assignments and support. There'd be a blend of that synchronous and asynchronous learning. Small group time and one-on-one time could be built in throughout a week of learning. Access to the teacher would be daily through a virtual platform. Daily attendance would need to be taken. Assessment and grading would absolutely happen. So this is different than the previous distance learning that had more flexibility because it was so new statewide that there wasn't an expectation of daily attendance or assessment and grading, and that would change going into fall 202021. And the state has made clear that that needs to change to be daily. At the middle school, not all electives could be available through a virtual model, but meal service is certainly available through a drive-through pickup system. Those students wouldn't be on a campus, they could have access to their meal service, much like we've had with drive-through pickup. So I have some example schedules for each that I'm sharing tonight. And I know that we have members of the public watching, and I just want to be very clear that this is a sample. This is not set in stone. This is a sample. And this is for a student point of view, a student's schedule, which would be different than a teacher's schedule. So we're looking at each schedule through the lens of one student. And in this case, this would be an elementary student who happens to also be an English learner, student, and they're on the virtual five-days-a-week schedule. And so, this sample schedule includes an annual instructional minutes, 54,100 minutes. But the student would start their day, you know, preparing themselves. And at 8:30, their day begins synchronous with a morning class meeting, a lesson from the teacher, and they would also have some asynchronous work time. They would have their, a snack break and stretch move at home, much like recess occurs at a school. They could have small group lesson time, particularly for ELD lessons, English Language Development, that must continue. No matter what model an English learner student would be in, they still are to receive ELD daily. Then more independent work time, a lunch break, just like one would have at school. And then afternoon lessons, small group lessons, and independent work time. Even PE time, right, would be independent. They need to do their physical activity and track their minutes. Wednesdays are shorter days. There would still be a modified day, like the regular modified day schedule we have on Wednesdays, with a combination of, you know, whole group gathering, small group, and independent work time. Again, this is a student schedule. To look at a middle school schedule for a student, this is an example of doing a virtual schedule where the student does not attend every class period every day, so to speak, virtually. That can be cumbersome to go back-to-back-to-back. You'll see it represented on Wednesday. But first, let's talk about the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. A student could do half their class periods on two days of the week and half their class periods on another two days of the week. And you'll notice that during a class period, it says whole group, small group, and independent work, a combination of asynchronous and synchronous instruction. It's not an expectation that necessarily the teacher would lecture, per se, for the entire period, but could start with instruction and a lesson, and then have students peel off into either some small group work with the teacher or without, or independent work in an asynchronous fashion. On Wednesdays, using that time for students to have access to each of their teachers through some kind of office hours and their own independent work time. So those are virtual models from a student's schedule perspective that meet our instructional minutes requirement that continues in California. So that was virtual with five days a week, students learning from home. But hybrid takes what we know with traditional, as well as what you just saw with virtual, and combines that where the students are at school, on campus, two days a week in person. You'll notice, we noted that students, we could determine scheduling based on last name so that siblings have the same days of the week when they're on campus and such. And of course, when families have mixed last names, you know, work with families so that families are on campus the same days. The days would be a Monday, Thursday schedule or a Tuesday, Friday schedule. The other three days of the week would be like the virtual instruction model with personalized assignments and learning. One day synchronous, office hours on Wednesdays, and two days of asynchronous. In this model, students rostered to a teacher, half would be on campus two days a week, half would be at home, and then they'd switch. So, it makes for smaller class sizes in the hybrid model. Google Classroom continues to be the learning management standard for our district. There is daily access to the teacher in-person or virtual. Daily attendance is absolutely taken in-person or virtually, and assessment and grading are part of this model as well. This model can help students maintain a school connection since they go to the campus twice a week, though not all electives would be available for our middle school students. In this concept, this is a modified school day schedule where students would receive what we call super snack. And they would not stay for the lunch hour at the campus. Their day would be shortened, and they would leave with a to-go lunch as they exit the campus. And meal service would be available for students on the days they are not on campus through a drive-through pickup meal system. Students, on the days they're on campus, there would be access to after-school childcare programs on the campus. So again, we have sample schedule. This is elementary from a student point of view. A student's schedule, not a teacher's schedule, but a student's schedule where the student could be on campus on a Monday. And you see that they arrive actually after the, what we call the regular traditional school day start. This is a modified schedule. Our traditional students would start at 8:00 AM. Students in the hybrid would come at 8:15. This allows us to have staggered start to our school day, which does support being able to take the temperatures of students as they arrive on campus, different groups at different times. So, a student would arrive, let's say, look at the Monday on campus. They would receive instruction from their teacher, have their snack break, more instruction, exit the campus and take their lunch to go. When they go home, they could have access again to the teacher virtually for the teacher's final hour of the day, but also for students who were not on campus in the day. On that day, they would have access to the teacher at that time. On the Tuesday, the student would do their work virtually. On Wednesday, that would also be virtual. They would return to campus on Thursday, and Friday would be a virtual day. But you'll notice that every single day, students, whether virtually or on campus, have access to their teacher. As for the middle school, this is also a staggered start where traditional students would start at 7:30. Our students on the hybrid schedule would start at 7:45, so 15 minutes later for the staggered start. There would be only four class periods a day. So a student on a Monday would attend period 1, 3, 5, and 7, exit campus with their lunch, could go home and have teacher office hour virtually. On Tuesday would be a virtual day to do the work they learned about in periods 1, 3, 5, and 7, and have access to their teacher through the office hour at the end of the day. and have access to their teacher through the office hour at the end of the day. Thursday would be periods two, four, six, and eight, and then the virtual work for that on Friday. On Wednesdays, students would have access to all their teachers for all class periods. And again, this is a student schedule. So in terms of our instructional integrity and readiness for this, we have had Google Classroom for six years. And teachers have been provided training and instructional coaches to support their learning and use of Google Classroom, as well as opportunities for certification to become certified in Google each of those years. We have student devices one-to-one. Thank you for approving the order at our last meeting to get to the one-to-one for this coming year, though we've had one-to-one in grades three through eight for five years. Our teacher capacity, we have invested in professional learning to support personalized student learning. Beyond student, teacher certifications for Google Classroom, there have also been certifications for other systems like News ELA and Brain Pop. And our instructional coaching team that has been a part of our district for six years has also been providing professional development through whole group, small group, and one-on-one support for teachers. And we would continue providing professional development to prepare for both virtual and hybrid and have some dates already planned for that professional development for any teachers who might be teaching those virtual or hybrid environments. It is important to note that students with disabilities have absolute access to all the offered instructional model options. And their services per their IPs would be provided in all models to ensure a free and appropriate public education. And we would work collaboratively with each family to determine what FAP looks like for each student, communicate often with families in their home language, and update their IP to reflect the model that is selected by the family. Same with English learners. They have access to all instructional model option offerings. And they would receive designated ELD and integrated ELD in all models. Communication with families will be often and in the home language. LPAC testing would absolutely continue for all students, no matter what model they're in. And there would be reclassification opportunities continuing as well. And District English Learner Advisory Committee and District Advisory Committee input was thought on how to do LPAC testing for the coming year, as well as reclassification. Early childhood education, our early childhood education program, we are working to offer multiple instructional models for ECE, early childhood. There are some specific program regulations and licensing requirements specific to early childhood education with state preschool and Head Start. So we have to be mindful of those in our options. And early Head Start is for infants and toddlers. And that was a home-based visit program that is currently to be offered as a virtual learning model so that staff members are not going into the homes for the twenty twenty-one school year or until other regulations change for that program. There has been an investment in devices, in technology devices, for families to use to support blended or virtual environment learning options. And communication with families is often and in the home language. We do have a timeline. It is fast and furious. It is quick. And as you said, President Moon earlier, you know, every district, colleges as well, are in the same boat, so to speak, in working on this. So this is a fast timeline, given our first day of school is August sixth. And so we are currently June twenty-third reviewing the instructional models. We would start marketing the models as of tomorrow to our families and providing the extra details that were mentioned earlier in terms of people seeking extra details in the marketing of model options. And then pushing out for parents, guardians, a choice option form the first half of July, as well as figuring out the staffing components of that and staff staffing of those options. And then work to notify staff of final assignments, opening school offices two-thirds of the way through July, confirming model choice enrollments to parents and guardians, offering that teacher professional development for virtual and hybrid model teachers, posting rosters on August third, making contact with families, and August sixth, first day of school. Do you have questions?
I did have a question. I know that you offer Kite Learning, Aludo. Is that all teaching tools that are provided on that as well as the Google certification?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Yes, we did have Kite Learning for a few years. We no longer have that one, but that also provided modules for Google certification and Google training, not necessarily certification, but the training. And then also Aludo absolutely did. That was our digital platform for professional development options that provided opportunities for staff to learn the Google platforms and tools, as well as much more.
So are those still offered for those that didn't either access it or maybe they weren't here at that time? Is that something that either the current instructional coaches can assist faculty with?
Absolutely. We can have absolute support, digital modules and people, right, to continue that PD? Yes.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Do any other board members have comments or questions?
I have a few questions, and this can be answered by any one of you. I'm a little concerned about accountability. And so I'm wondering what systems have been put in place for accountability for learning? Our parents' role, contracts to parents, things like that, that maybe they're still in the beginning stages so that they know that their students do have to participate if they choose the distance model or the hybrid model, that it's just not going to be like it was in the spring, a little bit different. And then also, could you address a little bit what you know right now about teacher accountability or staff accountability with, how are you going to manage that? I'm just a little bit curious about that.
I'll start with the parent portion first. Well, beyond, you know, our marketing plan will be robust. And we will also have parent training modules to push out, probably through video, but also some meetings, you know, online, you know, virtual meetings they can attend. And then also information for the teachers of those programs, you know, prepackaged and for teachers to share with parents as well. So when you're sharing information, it's good to have multiple contacts points to do that. One time is never enough. So that will be part of preparing parents for this, this change, right? A new way of thinking about school and letting them know that it's different than what they experienced the past three months with distance learning. And that's, it might seem silly to some, but even just changing the name to virtual learning is an important part in just mentally breaking from people's connotations with distance learning. As for staff accountability, I'm guessing that you mean like in terms of like how principals observe classrooms or walk through or that kind of thing? That can still be done in virtual environments, you know, inviting the site administrator in to see a lesson online. And in terms of the, the training and professional development support for virtual and hybrid model teachers, there will be more consistency in how those systems are rolled out, how their virtual classrooms are built. So you'll see that consistency across our virtual classrooms. Does that help, Marla?
Yeah, it does a little bit. I'm a little bit wondering about if I was a parent, and this was posed to me by one of our parents. And let's say I want to do the virtual. And oh my gosh, I'm three weeks in. No, I changed my mind. I want to go back to traditional. So what, is there going to be a contract for parents to sign? Are they gonna, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. There isn't a contract per se, but there is the caveat that once the initial choice is made, space might be limited in the other options if they try to change like a few weeks in. Space in the sense like it would be, you know, even if they want to jump back in and there isn't space at their home school. Maybe there's space in traditional at a different school, but not the home school. So their initial choice will be important and we expect, you know, calls and we are staffing so that we're here to take their calls and answer, myself included, you know, to get information out besides our marketing plan. And I, I also have, you know, a potential flyer to show you, and there'll be additional information with this, but I'm hoping Mr. Butler can put that up on the screen right now. Just, and it's a start, right? And we are building out the information that goes with what I'm about to show you.
Ms. Wise, well, Mr. Butler is getting that up. Can you speak to the considerations we reviewed today that the California legislator will be voting on in terms of ramping up some of that accountability in a distance or virtual learning model? We reviewed some bullet points where they really strengthen the expectations compared to when we close on an emergency basis versus how we're going to open with more planning now, so.
Yes.
Ms. Wise, would you share some of those accountability measures that were associated with those bullets?
Yes, I need to pull that up. Forgive me. I'm going to get that.
So I'll remember, I'll start on a couple of them while she's pulling that up. So one of the things was there's an attendance requirement, right? And so if, for instance, if you, if a student were to miss sixty percent of the week, then the district has to have an outreach strategy to re-engage that student, right? And so that's one of the things that under the last model, I don't know that we experienced a tremendous amount of that as a district, but across the state they did where people just completely disengaged. So there is an attendance requirement. You know, there are grading and assessment expectations, no matter which model you select. Which into the previous model, really your grade was kind of a no harm kind of approach where your grade couldn't go down. In this model, the proposal is that, you know, you earn your grade just like you would in any other model, right? And so you know, there are, there are greater accountability structures associated with the model that we would have to adhere to as a district. By the way, if it's approved on Friday, which I believe is when they're voting, that we need to do, to be accountable for ADA reimbursement and things of that nature.
So to add to that, the list is confirming that students have computer and internet access. It's not, you know, a hope and a prayer, right? We will absolutely confirm that they have it and it is working for them if they're on the virtual or the hybrid. Documenting their daily participation and taking attendance. And as Mr. Peyton said, a system to track non-participating students. We had put into place a system that emerged, particularly out of our elementary schools this past spring. And we will keep building upon that to make it even more effective in this system, setting procedures for re-engaging students who are absent for more than sixty percent of instruction per week. So that will be important too. And students would be subject to the regular SART and SARB processes, but we like to make those more positively intervening and not punishing, but working with families to make sure they have the right choice that's working for the student, communicating with parents and guardians about a student's learning progress, which implies, and there needs to be assessment and progress monitoring done regularly, ensuring teachers interact live daily to instruct, monitor progress, and maintain connections with students. So the word daily is key, and we have created that in our sample student plans, daily access to their teachers.
Perfect.
And providing academic supports for English learners, as I mentioned, with English language development. And then plans for meeting students who are academically behind. And that's where the personalized learning focus, the small groups, and the one-on-one will be built into a week of learning. So those, that's the list I was.
And thank you, Michelle. That helps, that helps a lot. And by the way, I appreciate it so much. And I know we're in a, in an area of unknown sometimes. One last question, and this has to do with the staff. And this is teachers to custodians, to clerks, to everybody. Remind me again when the rollout's going to happen about letting them know about, hey, face shields or mask or, you know, this is what our district's going to provide you. I know as a board, we know some, some information, but when is that going to be rolled out? I know the safety committee's worked very hard. Just what's the timeline on that one?
I'll ask if Mr. Murray, we have a robust timeline. If Mr. Murray's been leading the safety committee, if he could chime in on this one.
And we're going to roll out that information very quickly because we have to give our staff an idea of what position or what protections we have in place as they make a selection of what they'd be most interested in teaching it. So they'll get some of that information at that point. Couple of key things, like a big area of concern is will there be a requirement for face masks or shields? And that will be something that's in place as we start the new school year. Another big question mark would be, you know, social distancing and kind of the concept of six-foot distance between people. And, you know, within the regular program, it's going to be difficult to maintain that six-foot distance, the social distancing on a daily basis or in certain environments. But we do want to maximize to whatever is possible in the classroom or even on campus in the general sense. But that will have a different meaning when you're in a virtual classroom versus within a hybrid and then the traditional classroom. So we want to share all that information with them. We'll have some guidelines on disinfecting on a daily basis. Certain items we disinfected in between uses from one person to the next. Some will be done on a daily basis. And some will be done as needed when we see the potential of a concern that somebody has had, an infection.
Mr. Murray, are, is the school district following CDC, OSHA guidelines and the public health department?
We're following guidelines as they're presented to us. Now, there's many different groups that are providing guidelines. And right now, we're primarily following those, we're following the Department of Public Health.
So I would add, in terms of safety, it takes many different facets, right? It's, one aspect is on a daily basis, doing the screening process as people come on the campus. Then there's the, the personal protective equipment associated with being on campus on a daily basis. And then there are the disinfecting and hygiene procedures that are in place. And we have detailed plans for all of, for all of those scenarios, knowing that things can still change at any time. So last Friday, so I think it's Tuesday now, so Friday, you'll know that, you'll notice that the governor now started requiring the wearing of masks versus recommending. And there was a lot of confusion in that initial order because it implied that there was an exemption for schools. Later in the day, we got clarification from our law firms that there really aren't exemptions for schools. There may be exemptions for specific people within a school. For instance, if they had a pre-existing health condition that would necessitate not wearing a mask or a learning disability or some kind of disability that might prevent wearing a mask. But those are very limited exceptions. And so, you know, just as recently as Friday, when one little change comes, it creates a lot of confusion. And we anticipate more of that over the next five weeks, which is why we have a plan. But we also need to have to be willing to adjust that plan based on whatever the latest information is that we have.
And I agree, we need to be flexible, but I, you know, and I, I want to make sure that our staff is well-informed of, well, this is our plan now. And yes, we know it could be changed in five weeks, which I'm sure it will, because I'm a big component of little ones and being able to see their, their teacher's mouths, you know, and, and the teacher vice versa, and, you know, in that early learning stage of learning how to say words and whatever. But anyway, getting back to the communication, I just want to make sure, and I think you so far are doing a pretty good job, but that our staff is well-informed on a weekly basis of what's happening. That's going to relieve a lot of that anxiety, I believe, and, you know, whether it holds true for the next week. But at least they know what this week's current status is. And that goes from anywhere of, hey, how And that goes from anywhere of, hey, how do I become a distant or a virtual um teacher to um, I want to do the hybrid model. And just anyway, thank you all of you for, for your work on this, definitely.
Well, on that note of communication, starting tomorrow um afternoon, we would be pushing out what you see on the screen. That is a synopsis of the traditional hybrid and virtual models. And each of those um three programs or model options would have a link to a more detailed page of information about each one of those. And then um you'll note on the bottom there, it does mention that students with disabilities and English learners have access to all three models. And then the statement at the bottom says after initial selection requests for changes to the instructional model will be based on space availability. And Mr. Butler, could you please go to the second page? It will also include an overview of our um safety information, and there will be a link to a, a much more detailed plan of safety information on this page. So there will be a webpage built out with all the information. And as I see the mask requirement, I already see, okay, I need to edit that. It needs to be face covering requirement, because it's not always mask, it can be a face shield. And so um we note the most recent statewide order that mandates the broad use of face coverings and schools are not exempt from mandatory face coverings and are expected to comply with face coverings for staff, students and visitors in indoor public spaces and in outdoor spaces when six feet of social distancing is not possible. And then the special circumstances that Trevor has mentioned. In terms of physical distancing, we note that state guidance does honor that sufficient physical distancing on school grounds may be difficult or impossible. That is noted in California Department of Education's Stronger Together document, page seven. And so we will maintain physical distancing to the maximum extent possible indoors and outdoors on school grounds. And desks will be spaced out accordingly to the maximum extent possible in classrooms and minimize face-to-face contact. Health screenings, as Mr. Murray mentioned. Staff will complete their own self-screening process before reporting to work. Students' families are encouraged to do the same, but we will do temperature checks as um students arrive to campus upon entering campus. In terms of hygiene, all staff and students will be expected to wash or sanitize hands at the beginning of the school day and then protocols throughout the day. And then classrooms will be equipped with um soap and paper towels and/or hand sanitizer. And there'll be disinfectant spray for classrooms as well as wipes. And common areas will have hand sanitizer all over our campuses in the common areas. And classrooms will be disinfected daily as well as common areas. In terms of case responses, if there is a suspected or confirmed case among staff or students, we make immediate contact with Riverside County Public Health and take their guidance in terms of our response. So responses will vary based on the circumstances of the case and local health conditions at the time. And then this is our final caveat, which was mentioned by, I think, all of you earlier. The future considerations that the district instructional model, models and health protocols are subject to change based on updated state and county mandates and/or local public health conditions. So that's an overview synopsis of our plans, but there will be a link at the bottom of this page that goes to a more detailed plan about all the health and safety protocols.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing.
My pleasure.
Uh, do any more um board members have any comments or questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consent? Oh, sorry, Mr. Riller.
That's okay. Um, I was gonna give others an opportunity before I jumped in. Yeah, I, I agree with, with uh Ms. Moon and uh Ms. Clyte's about the work that the, the staff has done to put this together and, and the, the um surveys that were provided to our community. And because ultimately the parents are gonna make this uh the decision of what model that their children um participate in. Um, oh, one, one thing that I do have a, a concern about is that we do have staff that are at different levels of proficiency with respect to uh virtual learning and components of virtual learning. Um, for example, um, I think most of us, the most all, if not everyone in Romulan Elementary School District are fluent in Google Classroom. Um, I think that's a training that, that everybody has had in our district and, and are probably very proficient at that. And uh, and I think a lot of our children are proficient at Google Classroom. But it's, the concern that I have is the connection between the teacher's proficiency in a um i- in a software or a tool and the student's proficiency. Because when we went out in March, I guarantee there were some teachers that were amazing in their technology and were pulling things here and there and providing them to students. And the students didn't have any training on them, they didn't know how to do them. So we need to um really think about what expectations are we gonna have for our teachers and our students to ensure that both of them are able to do the software or the um uh tools virtually, for example. And this is just me right off the top of my head. Google Classroom, yes, I think everybody can do that. Um, a- and you also have to think about, well, if we're doing uh synchronous learning, uh, is it going to be uh Google Meet? Um, does everyone know how to do that? And does everyone know how to present? Do students know how to interact with their teacher using Google Meets? Um, Flipgrid. Um, do all teachers know how to use Flipgrid? And do all students know how to respond to a Flipgrid? Do um, do all of our teachers know how to use Screencastify? And uh, do all students know how to navigate that from their Google Classroom? So those are just the, the, I think probably the most, the biggest bang for our buck tools and software that, that our teachers are using. I'm concerned that, that um our students aren't proficient enough on them or using them to uh make them effective virtual learning uh tools. So we're gonna have to think about how to ensure we have, maybe videos can be made by our coaches or our teachers on how to use those and implement those. And also for our students to look at and how to utilize those uh virtually. Um, another, you know, uh thought that I have is, I, I think a lot of parent situations are gonna dictate what they choose. Um, you know, we're going back to work and uh daycare isn't available. So our parents are gonna be weighing between money to pay their mortgage and their cha- and their child's health. So we really have to ensure that our safety committee and our, the safety precautions and the safety plans that we put into place to do our best to maintain social distancing, maintain the cleanliness of our campuses. And we, we probably need to do some public service announcements for our kids. So they know, hey, you see a hand sanitizer station, you use it. Um, you go to the restroom, you wash your hands. Uh, and you know, things at home as well. We need to provide public service announcements for that. So there's a, a lot of things that are gonna have to happen as we transition to opening of the school year. And, and who knows? Things can change tomorrow. And so I, I think the, the big thing I think everybody should know is and, 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 and do is let's give each other some grace. Um, we've never experienced this before, we're learning as we go. Um, this is different than distance learning. As Ms. Clyde said, uh, Mrs. Clyde said, there's some uh, you know, accountability mechanisms. This is gonna be for real. So um, you know, I, we still need to, we need to give each other some grace and and I know that everybody's gonna do the very best they can and I have confidence in that.
I hide myself, do you?
Just keep working as hard as you are and, and, and I really do appreciate that uh for the staff and, but just think of some of those things I, I just mentioned. Thank you.
Oh, was there someone talking? Um, I did wanna uh mention that uh Mr. Riller had a couple, I mean, good, good comments also. So maybe, you know, a toolbox could be created for faculty with how to do a um screen as a podcast, you know, a few short things. And then on Google Classroom, the students know all how to enter it. Then maybe on the, the homeroom, they could have a video on why it's important to hand wash, how to correctly hand wash. You know, just a few introductions on how to utilize the tools that are be, that they're gonna have to utilize them. Um, and that may help everyone. And I know you guys are all addressing um these issues. So thank you so much. Um, do any board members have any additional comments or questions? Okay, do I hear? Go ahead. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Thank you. All second, any discussion?
I didn't do, I didn't do that. I unmuted myself.
Um, or did you have any discussion, Mark, Ms. Clyte? No, okay. All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Um, Mrs. Clyte? Um, she muted herself, but she mouthed aye. Mr. Reller?
Aye.
Mr. Sperry?
Aye.
And Ms. Moon, aye. We are now gonna move on to action items. Uh, J one and COVID nineteen written report. Uh, Ms. Wise, to explain this item.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, I presented in detail what would be in the operations written report. Um, now this J one item is um the final draft of that report, which tells our story as a district of how we responded to uh the COVID nineteen school closures. And it is to be um board approved and then submitted, uh, just submitted to the county. It does not need to be approved by the county or state, but submitted.
Thank you. Do any board members have comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Aye.
Mrs. Clyte?
Aye.
Mr. Reller?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Sperry?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Moon, aye. J two, approval and adoption of the two thousand twenty, twenty-two thousand twenty twenty-one annual budget. Uh, Ms. Cole, to explain this item.
Good evening, Board and members of Cabinet. I'm gonna give Vince just a minute, there it is. There, I'm not going to give you a full-blown presentation as you experienced two weeks ago. Uh, the purpose of these next few minutes is to explain the uh changes in the budget from the information item that I brought to you on June ninth. And now the budget that's going to be submitted to the county for approval. So next slide. This is the multi-year projection that I shared with you on June ninth. And I'm sure you will recall that um we were able to meet our obligations in the budget year and the first projected year. However, in the third year out, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year, our ending fund balance, uh circled in red there, of one point seven million dollars was not sufficient to meet all of the obligations of our ending fund balance, including the three and a half percent reserve for economic uncertainties. So that um realization triggered us to form a budget advisory committee. And I'll ask Vince to go to the next slide. Uh, this was a committee that was composed of three RTA representatives, three CSCA renit- uh representatives and three ed administrative representatives. And I just have to um commend this work upfront for the work that they did. They gathered quickly. Um, they grasped the um, the need and the, the urgency of the situation. And in two meetings, were first on June fifth and then on June tenth, able to identify and then consolidate recommendation, recommended um reductions to the budget. Uh, the first year they identified, which is actually this coming budget year, about one point two million dollars in budget reductions. The second year had an additional quarter of a million in reductions due to some staffing adjustments. And then that same reduction carried to the third year um for a total of four point one million dollars. And I think the thing that was um most commendable about their recommendations was the fact that they were uh had as a first priority preserving staff and salaries. And as a result of the um reductions that they identified, we are now able to take to the county a budget with the recommendation for a positive certification, meaning we can meet our obligations in all three years. The next slide is a multi-year projection um that shows, this does not have all of the budget reductions incorporated into it. There is some behind-the-scenes work that still needs to be done. But even at that, you'll see in our third year, uh twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we have a sufficient ending fund balance. It's almost five million dollars that allows us to um file that positive certification with the county because we can meet our three and a half percent reserve and uh all other obligations that are contained in our ending fund balance. So that's the budget that I will be asking you to approve this evening. Then Vince, if you wouldn't mind going to the last slide. This last slide gives you a very um brief update of what's happening with the state budget. The legislature did pass a state budget bill on June fifteenth. It was sent to Governor Newsom. And um just yesterday, Newsom and the legislature reached a budget agreement. Since it's so fresh, we have very few details as of today. Um, we're getting some information, uh, not enough to really work it out in the budget, but we do know that there is a zero COLA, which is an improvement over the uh May revision that Governor Newsom, that we had built our budget on. Uh, there are deferrals and it is depending on how much federal money we get for how extensive the deferrals will be. We do know there's an initial, initial tranche of one-time federal dollars, but depending on future allocations that come to the states, we will um possibly have to work with additional deferrals. But at this point, I just want to make the commitment to the board that I will keep you informed as details are known and as we're able to incorporate the information into our budget document. And that concludes my, my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Uh, do any board members have comments or questions? I do want to commend um the committee uh being able to uh balance the budget and especially preserving uh faculty, staff and salaries. So um, I think that is, you all did a, a tremendous job. Um, any other comments or questions, board members?
Just wants a great job on, on doing that, finding that.
Carol, um, this is our, our budget that we're gonna be presenting or submitting to the county. A- as we go through the next few years, we may need to make some uh adjustments to this, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
But uh as things stand today, we are submitting for a positive certification to the county for the next three years.
That is correct.
Great, thank you. And I uh, I would concur with uh Manny and Debbie. Great job, everybody, on um, you know, coming to the table and, and, you know, leaving no stone unturned. And that's the, another example of growing relationship. another example of good relationship uh, that we have with our bargaining units. And I also would like to commend uh, both bargaining units on their own because they, for years now, they have really understood the budget and have understood the relationship that we have uh, with them and 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 they understand that we want to ensure that that uh, they are compensated for the work that they do and uh, and they're rewarded for the work that they do. And uh, but at the same time, they understand that the state goes through some rough times and it's because of the relationship and the work that that we've done together, we're able to weather the storm and we did it before together. And we're going to have to um, be together on this one as well. So again, thank you to both associations and the staff for for getting out there and and rolling their sleeves up and getting this done.
And I agree, and I think that's due to the transparency. I think, Ms. Cole, you um, have done an excellent job since you've come to our district and we've all come together or um, the unions. Um, my last question is this this figure, our budget that you're um, submitting, this was um, submitted on the worst case scenario. Is that correct? I think we talked about that on June ninth.
Yes, that's correct.
So this is the worst, so it can only go up.
I do agree with you.
Okay. Well, that's great if we're positive in the worst case scenario. So that's that's terrific.
Yes.
So we uh, Ms. Moon, we so we could be providing updates where there's some improvement. The out years are what we don't know, right? In terms of uh, the overall economy in years two and three, there's a lot of uh, unpredictable kind of guesswork going on right now. The economy seems to be opening back up and things seem to be picking up, but um, you know, we're positioned well uh, based on the work of that committee to uh, you know, to meet our needs three years out. And I think hopefully if the if the legislator votes on Friday to approve this deal, uh, we'll be able to provide some clarity when we return in August on on what that means for us in terms of an improvement potentially.
Thank you. Really great. Uh, do any other board members have comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And all in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. Now we're going on to J three, resolution number thirty-five two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Romaland School District, establishing Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one Watson Branson Branson of the Romaland School District, authorizing the levy of special taxes and calling an election therein. Uh, Ms. Cole, to explain this item.
Yes, I'm actually going to explain items uh, resolution number thirty-five through thirty-seven and then ordinance number one because they are all one package.
Okay.
And it'll just be a very brief explanation. So formation of CFD twenty twenty dash one began with the board on May twelfth. This evening, the board is being asked to approve three resolutions and one ordinance to establish the CFD, hold a landowner election and authorize the levy of taxes.
Okay. Any uh, board members have comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number thirty-five, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty?
I'll make a.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Sperry? And Ms. Moon, I. Next one is J four, resolution number thirty-six, two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Romaland School District, acting as a legislative body of Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one Watson and Branson of the Romaland School District, determine determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in the amount not to exceed twelve million five hundred thousand within Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one Watson Branson of the Romaland School District and calling an election therein. Uh, Ms. Cole already explained this item. So board members, do any of you have comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry. All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Uh, Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. Um, the next item, the resolutions that we have just adopted call for a landowner election within CFD number twenty twenty dash one, which is to be held at this time by the clerk. The school district has received from the sole landowner a waiver consenting to holding the election this evening. The clerk is in possession of the ballot of the sole landowner and will open the ballot now. Uh, Manny, would you like to?
Yeah.
Take over?
So all ballots have been cast in connection with the election regarding the proposed formation of Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one Watson Branson of the Romaland School District. The election has now been closed. The result of said election was unanimous as follows. Sixty-four votes in favor of propositions A, B, and C.
Thank you. Having heard the statement of the clerk certifying the results of the voting on the propositions, I will entertain a motion to adopt the next item, J five, resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Romaland School District, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one Watson Branson of the Romaland School District, certifying the results of the June twenty-third, two thousand twenty special tax and bond election. Ms. Cole already explained this item. Um, board members, do you have any comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Uh, Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. Uh, J six, ordinance one, number one, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Romaland School District, authorizing the levy of a special tax within Community Facilities District number twenty twenty dash one Watson Branson on the Romaland School District. Ms. Cole, was this grouped in um, the same or do you need to explain this item?
This was grouped in with the other with the.
I wasn't sure. Thank you.
I know. I get that.
Um, do any board members have comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And myself, Ms. Moon, I. J seven, resolution number thirty-four, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Romaland School District, approving joint community facilities agreement with respect to Community Philly- Facilities District number two thousand twenty dash one of the city of Menifee. Um, do I have, do any board members have any comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. J eight, resolution number thirty-three two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, education protection account. Uh, Ms. Wise, to explain this item.
I think this is actually my item, Mrs. Moon.
I'm like, sorry, it says say you. Sorry, Ms. Cole.
No, that's okay. I thought, well, if Ms. Wise wants to speak to it, she's certainly welcome to.
No, no.
This is actually an annual resolution that declares that we have used our education protection account dollars in accordance with law. And for this district, we use these dollars uh, to help offset certificated salaries and benefits, which is an appropriate use of the dollars.
Thank you. Do any board members have comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Uh, all in favor, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. J nine, resolution number thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of Romaland School District, ordering election and establishing specifications of the election order. Uh, Ms. Cole, to explain?
Yes. So um, I think we as a district have spent several months on this work identifying the need, uh, you know, the fact that we're a growing district, that we have a need for additional uh, school facilities. And uh, we've had a lot of discussion about putting uh, a bond on the ballot, asking voters voters to approve uh, a bond resolution for our district to allow um, additional facilities to be built. So resolution number thirty-one is actually the resolution that author- authorizes us to um, put this bond election on the ballot in November.
Thank you. Do any board members have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I I have comments. Um, you know, it's something I've been going around with, you know, especially what's going on now. I understand the need for the for the schools and the importance of of getting these bonds going and and so forth. Uh, I'm just gonna I want to go on record, say I do have some reservations during this time, uh, how the economy is going right now and uh, how our stakeholders or many of them might be feeling at this time. And their concerns with uh, additional uh, taxes uh, on their uh, on their property tax and whatnot. Um, I'm willing to put it out to the stakeholders and let them decide for themselves. Uh, but uh, you know, yeah, I just to let you know, I do have some concerns about this at at this particular time. That's it.
For me, um, it is a, it's a challenging time, I think everywhere. Um, I believe when I researched it, um, I met, I live in Heritage Lake and I believe it's an additional eight or nine dollars um, more a month, but um, I I do feel we are running out of space. We do need another school. And um, we've never asked for a bond. We don't, we've never um, asked for a bond. And it's just something that I feel that the community should make that decision, knowing that if we don't have funds, there are no funds, then you know, that means you're around schools. It means it changes. A lot of things would change and and they get to, they get to choose that. So um, that's just what I wanted to add. Uh, do any other board members have comments or questions?
I just have one comment. Um, we manage our money very well and no matter what school district you're in, you just can't afford to put out thirty-some million for a brand new school. No matter how great fiscally you manage your money. And I think that's a misconception by some people thinking that perhaps Romaland should manage their money better. And I'm here to say that that has nothing to do with it. And then I agree with Mrs. Moon and I agree with Mr. Sperry. Let's put it out to the voters. And let's hope, let's hope they um, they agree.
Yeah, I I just, the continue, I I I don't question how we manage our money as a district and things like that. I know we do very well. And and it's shown that year over year and uh, especially with this last budget that we just approved, you know, with the uh, major hurdles we have. Just my concern is just strictly the uh, climate today on on how people might be feeling and and uh, do they want to take on something like that? But yes, we, I agree, we need to put it out and let the voters vote on it.
Yeah, what I would recommend, Mr. Sperry, too, to all our stakeholders is to educate themselves on the bond and that and why we're asking for it. We've never, we've never had to. Heritage Lake was a very large community. At that time, the developers um, contributed to paying for the schools that we have, Chase Mesa. But um, the the developments that are going in are very small and we that opportunity is is non-existent today. So you know, right now we're clo- we're coming up to capacity. We're putting on portables. But eventually, you know, we can't have a whole school ground full of portables. We're going to have to build more schools. So I just feel if the stakeholders at least educate themselves and then they can make an educated, you know, vote and decision. Uh, any other board member uh, comments or questions?
I I would just like to add that um, you know, I agree with the other board members' comments about how we have been very good stewards of the public's money. We've never ever asked the um, asked the community for a bond as as far as what we have been, we have been told. Um, we have um, worked very hard to ensure that uh, we have utilized uh, our funds to ensure that our our school sites are uh, equitable and equal um, in in all of our communities. And I believe that uh, that's because of our stewardship of the money that we were able to do that. Um, we also can't lose sight. Uh, it's just not one um, uh, community in Romaland Elementary School District, that is, that uh, has been paying for schools. We have many other uh, community facilities uh, districts out there that are providing money into our capital facilities outlay fund um, that do not live in the 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 master plan communities such as uh, Heritage Lake, you know? Some of our um, money that are coming in from from other homes that are 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 went into that fund and and helped us build uh, Chase Middle School. And um, so we also have to make sure that we communicate that it's just not one school that's going to be uh, receiving benefits from this bond. It's every single one of our schools that are gonna, that are going to be uh, receiving benefits uh, from this bond. Um, not just uh, uh, building of one school to alleviate overcrowding. There are many other needs at all of our school sites and they're going to be addressed. Um, and and that and that's one thing that we're going to have to do is do a very good job of communicating the uh, reasons and the why and our story of why we need to do this. Um, and and what are the, what are the the ramifications if if we don't do it?
Thank you, Mr. Reller. Uh, any other board member comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor, uh, Mr. Geary?
Hi.
Mrs. Kites?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. J ten, Riverside County Office of Education memorandum of understanding for education. Specialist District Intern Program. Mr. Murray, to explain this item?
Yes, this is an agreement with Riverside County Office Office of Education. To place intern teachers into our special education program. And it's been a successful program and we intend anticipate using it this upcoming year. So I think this is extremely valuable to our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Do any board members have comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, Mr. Gary?
Hi.
Uh, Mrs. Clyte?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Mrs. Moon, I. J eleven, Western Governors University Student Teaching Letter of Agreement. Uh, Mr. Murray, to explain this item?
We have agreements with a variety of universities for the placement of student teachers. And this agreement allows us to continue working with Western Governors University. If we identify a student teacher, we'd like to place him one of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, board members, do you have any comments or questions? Do I hear, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mr. Gary?
Hi.
Mrs. Clyte?
Hi.
Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. J twelve, provisional internship application. Uh, Mr. Murray, to explain this item?
We have a prospective employee for our RISE program who could be placed into one of our teaching positions. If we're able to apply for and receive a provisional internship permit on her behalf. Um, she's an excellent candidate. She's working towards a advanced degree in. Um, I think it's elementary education and special education. So she'd be a perfect fit for our school district and this is the way we could get her into our classroom.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, any comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, Mr. Gary?
Hi.
Uh, Mrs. Clyte?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Reller?
Hi.
Mr. Sperry?
Hi.
And Ms. Moon, I. Uh, this concludes our meeting. Board member closing comments. Um, Mr. Gary, any closing comments?
Nothing.
Uh, Mrs. Clyte?
I just have one and I'd like to um concur with Mr. Reller when he commented that all sites will benefit from the passing of this bond.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Reller, any closing comments?
Um, I'd just like to reiterate, you know, the. The work that everybody is doing with respect to opening up the new school year. And how things change uh frequently and how. How many more details um are going to need to be flushed out? And some of these details may not even be best understood until we actually open schools. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna learn from this every single day and we're gonna get better at it every single day. So I want to go back to my previous comment about we need to continue giving each other some grace and learning from this. Uh, so we can continue to improve what we do each and every day when that time comes. And whatever model it looks like uh when we start school because. You know, we are starting school. It's just we have to look at what model it is. Um, so I would just like to reiterate that.
Nicely said, Mr. Reller. Uh, Mr. Sperry? Any comments, Mr. Sperry? Closing comments?
No, I I have no comments, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Good on you.
And Ms. Moon, no closing comments. So our regular board meeting is adjourned at seven oh five P M.